Before we begin, could we all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the law of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Board, and in continuing our tradition, before we start our official meeting, Mr. Howard, would you read our mission statement?
Is this becoming a tradition?
Yes.
North Idaho College meets the diverse educational needs of students, employers, and the northern Idaho community it serves through a commitment to student success, educational excellence, community engagement, and lifelong learning.
Thank you, Mr. Howard, and I would just like to point out that on May 15th, we had a very successful graduation of North Idaho College. We had 350 students who walked and over 1,000 that graduated, so we met our mission statement. I'm very proud of all those students. So at this point in time, I'd like to -- we've verified our quorum, we don't have any special guests, but we do have some minutes for review, Board. Any adjustments, changes to the minutes? Hearing none will accept the minutes as written. Public comment: We do have two citizens who'd like to speak, and I'll tell you very quickly the rules on public comment. Public comment is allowed at the discretion of the Board chair in accordance with Board Policy 2.01.03, and will be heard only on matters on the meeting agenda. Individuals designing to be heard or desiring, excuse me, to be heard on the agenda item must sign up in advance unless a specific agenda item to be addressed. Any comments or concerns must be made in respectful manner and must relate to the agenda topic. Comments should not address other subjects, and all comments are limited to two minutes. We have two people who do have an agenda item. First would be John Trembold. Would you like to speak, John?
I have only a brief comment on the budget, which I believe is on the agenda tonight, and that is that I support the budget, that I believe the faculty of the college support the budget, that the faculty work very hard at this institution to build it and see it develop, and that the budget itself, of course, is going to represent a kind of a compromise. There's much in it, it's a large matter, and there's much more to be said about it. I myself would be quite happy to comment on the budget in detail, but I have three minutes, so I'll leave it simply as a summary statement that I support the budget as it stands tonight. Thanks.
Thank you, John. Next is Sharon Herbert.
No, read again.
I'm sorry, ma'am. Hebert, thank you, welcome.
I have a question to ask. I have to admit, I come uninformed, because if you have a printed budget, I haven't seen it, and so I just wonder, is your budget the same as last year, or more or less?
No, ma'am, there have been some changes, and we will do, under Tab 4, we will do a complete presentation on the budget.
I understand that, but changes are changes. Does the final balance come out to more or less?
Yes, ma'am, in this proposed one.
It is proposed to be a higher budget.
Correct.
It would be so appreciative if you could be more sensitive to the taxpayer and how our taxes are going up, that you have the responsibility to do your fiduciary best with what you get, not with what you want, and it'd be greatly appreciated if you take that under concern. I don't get the opportunity to have an increased income every year, and when my taxes go up by $1,000 in a year, it makes my eyes get big, it makes me nervous, and so what you do comes to consciousness for me in a big way, and I appreciate your consideration on that heavily. Thank you.
Thank you for that, and just to help ease that a bit for you, there, in this budget, there is no proposal for a tax increase.
That's, I guess, what I'm wanting to hear. So that means then that your budget is not -- you've got an increased budget, but you're not going to be raising the taxes?
That's correct.
This is the kind of magic we like to see.
Thank you, ma'am, thank you for your comment.
Where are you getting your extra money, then? Where's you getting the money from the increased?
The extra money that we have comes from new property that comes, are in the tax rolls, so any growth, that additional taxes are taxed at there, and then that, which is approximately $445,000 worth of additional income to the university.
And you have to spend it, huh?
We don't have to do anything.
All right, thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you. All right, that takes us on to celebrating success. Trestle Creek Review, Jonathan Frey. Is that correct, Frey?
Frye.
Frye, I'm so sorry.
Good evening, trustees, President Dunlap, members of the President's Cabinet, and everyone else. Thank you for the opportunity to come and share with you all a little bit about what we've been up to lately. This month, earlier in May, Trestle Creek released its 29th issue, which all of you have in front of you. Trestle Creek's been publishing in some form or another since about 1983, almost annually. The magazine exists to publish all kinds of work, a whole, a large range of literary and creative work from members of the NIC community, so that's students, faculty, staff, alums, as well as by members of the community, residents of the northern five counties. I've been working on the magazine as the editorial advisor for the past five years, and what that means fundamentally is that I get to teach the class where the students who edit the magazine gather and edit the contents of each year's publication. So the students come in at the beginning of January, and they, they're greeted by this pile of submissions that come from all over North Idaho, from campus, a whole range of different writers, different voices, and they're all assembled there, and my students greet that pile, and they begin to evaluate every single piece, and they ask questions. We ask all kinds of exciting, difficult questions about artistic merit, about the content of the piece, about the substance and the significance of each individual piece, and piece by piece, poem by poem, story by story, photo by photo, they build the book. And for me, as, it kind of, I see my goal as to kind of empower them to make good choices about the content, to kind of field their questions, and help to guide the editorial process a little bit, but it's their book. They make it, they edit it, it's theirs, they own it. And it's exciting, it's exciting to witness it, and maybe the most exciting piece for me is to get to watch the students as they begin to develop their own sort of aesthetic sensibilities about it. They began the semester often unsure how to even ask questions about it, right? So they ask, they ask questions about, well, what does it have to do, or what does it have to be? What is or isn't a poem, and how do I know if it's good? Right? They begin asking these very fundamental questions, and by the end of the semester, what's exciting to me is to watch them passionately advocate for some piece that they love, that they've, they've realized, they've realized what it means for something to, to speak to something larger than itself, for a work of literature to speak to the human condition in some substantial way. And so that's exciting, right? Many of my students will go on to write or to edit, to work in the publishing industry, and the experience that they have working on the magazine is kind of a first glimpse for them. Most of them will go on to work on some kind of a publication at a four-year institution. Many of them work in the industry, out just in the public, and they're, they're exciting people, you know, they're really exciting people to get to work with, my students are, and it's exciting to get to work with them at this kind of foundational stage in their own aesthetic and artistic development. But, so the magazine is a class, but it's also an entity unto itself, right? And so if the class exists for my students, and maybe solely for my students, the magazine doesn't. The magazine actually serves, it serves a larger role in the community at large. Trestle Creek is not just NIC's literary magazine, it's North Idaho's literary magazine. To the best of my knowledge, Trestle Creek is the only literary magazine that publishes in North Idaho, certainly the only magazine that publishes exclusively writers from the region, and that's exciting. We get to make connections with people in the community. So there's a woman who writes under the pen name of Mae Jordan, and we've published her work in at least three of the issues that I've worked on, I've worked on five issues, and we've published her work in at least three of these issues. She's, she's a, she's an exceptional, exceptional poet, and a really remarkable woman. She's in her 70s, she's struggling with MS, which makes it extraordinarily difficult for her to speak and for her to write, but she keeps doing it, she writes these phenomenal poems, there's one of them in the issue that you're looking at tonight. And we've been able to work with her, and we've met her, and my students, she came, she surprised me, actually. She came to our launch last year, I'd never met her, I had only interacted with her via email and seen her work, and then we'd mailed magazine, we'd mailed copies to her after they published. But then, last year, she surprised us and showed up at the launch, and then this year, we asked her if she would come and read, and read for the launch, and my students, especially the young woman who served as my poetry editor this year, they were so excited to get to meet her and hear her read and talk to her. She talked to my poetry editor and my managing editor for hours after the launch, and she's just a remarkable woman who's led a remarkable life in North Idaho, and she writes about it, she writes this phenomenal poetry. One more story. There's a woman named Renee Dow, she lives up in Clark Fork, she teaches adjunct for us in the English department, and she writes, she writes nonfiction, she writes remarkable, remarkable essays. And in Trestle Creek number 27, so two issues ago, we published a kind of strange, which to me is an extraordinarily good term, strange or weird for literature, it's a good thing. So she published, she gave us this really cool, really strange essay that later on that year was picked up by the Best American Essays series, which is this major national annual anthology. So they picked up Renee's essay and listed it as a notable essay. This is a publication that publishes annually work that's been printed in The New Yorker and Harper's and The Atlantic, major national publications, and they found our piece, right? They found Renee's piece in the magazine. And the piece, and she gave us a piece this year, too, and the piece that she's written this year is even more remarkable than the one from a couple of years ago. And so, these are the kinds of people who my students get to interact with, this is our community, right? This is North Idaho, and these are the people who my students get to interact with. And so I'm excited about this, I'm excited about the future of engagement between the magazine, between the English department, and the community at large. We were invited, Trestle Creek was invited to Sorenson Elementary this past year to talk to their fifth graders, which was fantastic, and they wanted to hear about what we do and how they can do something like it. And so, so there are lots of these fantastic opportunities to continue this kind of engagement. We work closely with graphic design to make the magazine look as good as it does for the, you know, razor-thin budget that we have, and we have a close relationship with a local printer who basically gives us their work for free. And so, you know, there are these great, great community, community connections that we're able to build, and it's exciting, and thank you for making it possible and for taking a second to hear about it, so.
It's fantastic.
Any questions I can field, or?
Board, any questions?
Thank you, Jonathan.
Yeah, of course.
It's a wonderful presentation, and you're clearly very passionate about your curriculum, and we love that. Your students benefit from that. It's very contagious, and I can see why he was chosen to present, it's a, it's a great program to tell us about. Thank you for your work.
Yeah, of course, gladly.
Enjoy your summer.
Thank you.
All right, Board, before we go on to our constituent reports, I'm going to ask Dr. Dunlap to introduce our new leaders.
Thank you, Madam Chair, we have some new constituent leaders for this next year. First of all is Maria Paluzzi, our ASNEC president, but she is not here tonight because students are out until summer session starts, which is the first of June. But we have Jessica Grantham, who is our Staff Assembly Leader. Jessica?
Welcome.
We have John Trembold, who is our Faculty Assembly Leader, or Chair, and then we have Erin Dave, excuse me, John is our Senate Chair. Our Faculty Assembly Chair is Erin Davis, who was re-elected again, so congratulations, and thank you all for serving in that leadership capacity.
Thank you, we're going to have a wonderful year together. All right, then, let's hear from you, Staff Assembly, Jessica.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Trustees, President Dunlap, and guests. Allow me to introduce myself to you. I'm an accountant in the business office, and I've been fortunate to work for the college for just a little bit shy of six years now. I also moonlight as an adjunct faculty member for the Business and Professional Programs Division. I am honored to have the opportunity to serve and represent my colleagues on Staff Assembly for the next year. I will be joined by Teresa Henderson, our Vice Chair. Ray Ann Bounds will serve as our Staff Assembly Secretary. Our new senators include Krista Brown, Jeff Davis, Rex Fairfield, and Andrea Wemper. Our Senate alternates are Jessica DeWitt and Tom Green, and our continuing senators are Kim Browning, Betsy Connery, Josh Gittle, and Kelly Hopkins. Staff Assembly met on May 14th. President Joe Dunlap was our speaker for the month and gave us an overview of the budget process and salary recommendations that were presented to the Board. He discussed challenges with funding and enrollment and reviewed the upcoming projects around campus. Dr. Dunlap was gracious enough to field questions regarding the recent budget workshop, tentative schedules for the three new buildings, the Four Corners project, and the approved art on the bulkhead. Staff Assembly recognized the Staff Appreciation Award nominees with a certificate and a copy of the nominations that were submitted. The award winners were announced at commencement breakfast, and we would again like to thank the NIC Foundation for their support of these awards. Andrea Wemper gave an update regarding open enrollment for employee benefits. Jessica Bennett gave an update on the Rex Center on behalf of John Totten. Chantel Black gave an update regarding commencement, and Stacy Hudson encouraged staff members to come out and cheer on graduates as they participated in the processional before commencement. That's a lot of fun. And finally, Staff Assembly Executive Committee would like to extend their support and appreciation to President's Cabinet and Dr. Dunlap for the balanced budget and summary, or salary recommendations currently before the Board. We value the extensive work that went into creating the budget and appreciate the transparency of that process. That concludes my report. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Board, any questions? Well, you had a full agenda. Sounds like a lengthy meeting.
It wasn't too bad this month.
Thank you for your report.
Thank you.
All right, now if we may hear from Erin Davis, Faculty Assembly.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Trustees, President Dunlap, members of President's Cabinet, and colleagues and guests. Faculty Assembly met on May 14th, the very last day of the semester, and our only business item on the agenda was the election of five faculty senators and two alternates. So the results of our election are as follows. Gerard Mathis and John Trembold were re-elected to second terms on the College Senate. Jason Drouche, Maureen Steinel, and Laura Templeman were elected as senators for the first time, and Anya Fredericks and John Clausen were elected as our Senate alternates for next year. So I want to congratulate them all and thank them for their willingness to represent faculty on the College Senate. We've reached the end of another successful school year, as you pointed out, graduation was a pretty wonderful day, so I have some thank yous to give out. I would first, on behalf of Executive Committee, like to thank President Dunlap for the level of communication that we have had with his office this year. I appreciate his leadership, and I also appreciate Shannon Goodrich, who is always so kind and patient and helpful whenever I call to pester her with questions. I also want to thank the entire President's Cabinet. We've had several members of them come and speak at our meetings this year. We had Vice President Burns come speak to us twice about policies of special interest to faculty. Vice President Browning previewed the legislative session for us. Vice President Martin discussed the budget process with us, and Dean Larry Briggs updated faculty on the GEM process, and I guess we're going to have to figure out a way to get Vice President Stanley to join the fun next year. But we really appreciate administration's willingness to share information with us and invite faculty questions and feedback, and I would also like to thank the Board for valuing these constituent leaders' reports and giving us an opportunity to speak to you each month. It is much appreciated. Finally, on behalf of Faculty Assembly Executive Committee and all of the faculty who have been so interested and engaged in the budget discussions this year, I would like to state our support for the balanced budget for the 2015-2016 school year that has been proposed by President's Cabinet. We support this budget because of the values it represents. We recognize that these are both exciting and challenging times for North Idaho College. Right now, we are looking forward to the groundbreaking next month for the new Career Technical Building, which will be so important to the continued growth and success of our career technical programs, and a little further on the horizon is the Joint Use Building with its potential to further raise the profile of higher education in North Idaho through the education corridor, and all of the exciting opportunities that will represent for our academic transfer students. So these are indeed positive developments for this college. In light of that, we support this budget because it communicates the value that the people who dedicate their professional lives to North Idaho College, the people who carry out the mission of this college every day, and who often take it home with them on nights and weekends, the people who educate and advise students, the people who counsel and coach students, and the people who work in a myriad of ways to make this a welcoming, safe, supportive, effective, and efficient place for our students to pursue their dreams, that those people are as important as the buildings we need to build. So we are very happy that the balanced budget proposed by the administration communicates this important value, and it is our hope that that budget is approved tonight. That concludes my report for this evening and for the school year.
Thank you, Erin. Any questions, Board, for Erin?
Thank you for your report.
All right, that takes us to Senate, John Trembold.
We held a very efficient final meeting on the 14th, toward the end of finals week. There wasn't extensive debate and discussion, perhaps because it was toward the end of finals week, that's my guess. We, our guests included Lita Burns, Vice President for Instruction, Larry Briggs, Dean of General Studies, Carrie Hines, Academic Advisor, Laura Hill, Executive Director of Human Resources, and our old and new business included a number of policies and procedures which were approved for second readings, and so I'll just briefly review them. The policy procedure 3.02.18, workers' compensation policy procedure was approved. The policy procedure 5.02, academic probation, suspension, disqualification, was also passed for second reading. And the instructor-initiated withdrawals, which is 5.04.02, was passed for both a first and second reading, which was a remarkably nimble procedural move, but was justified by the fact that it was actually the third time that we had dealt with this issue in the Senate. So this was passed unanimously. We also elected officers. John Trembold was elected as the Chair of the Senate. Josh Gittle was elected as Vice Chair. Gerard Mathis was approved as parliamentarian. In his absence, I might add, that was my idea. And Jessica DeWitt was approved as corresponding secretary. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, John. Board, any questions? Anything? No? I guess you're fine, thank you. All right, that takes us to the President's Report. President Dunlap.
Madam Chair, Trustees, and colleagues, I have a relatively short report tonight. As you are aware, Steve Rupel, who has served this institution for 35 years, will be retiring, and we conducted a national search, and Steve's replacement will be Ken Ordinsky, and Ken will come to us from Great Falls College, and he has 19 years of experience as a NIT, and his current position is as Chief Information Officer at Great Falls College. He begins work on July 13th. We also have undertaken a national search for a new Dean of Career and Technical Education, and Laura Hill is chairing that committee. The Governor appointed NIC as a state entity eligible for the Federal Mining Safety Health Administration grant, and that is being transferred from University of Idaho to North Idaho College. And what that represents is that we will conduct mine safety training throughout the state. There have been some fair resources transferred from University of Idaho, which includes $90,000 a vehicle and personnel funding for one individual, and so that will work out of our workforce training center. At our registered nurse graduation, based on our last year's class, we had a 100% first-time pass rate at the NCLEX, and you may recall that last year, out of 12 educational institutions in the state that offer nursing, North Idaho College had the number one pass rate, and so we seem to have maintained that position. On a sadder note, Gina Prindle will be leaving and is taking a position at Heritage Health, and so we will need to find a new replacement as Director of Nursing for her. The State Board of Education will be meeting here in Coeur d'Alene at North Idaho College June 17th and 18th, and typically, the State Board has come here in December, and attendance has not been well participated, and so by having this in June, I would expect many more people to come up and enjoy what we enjoy here in, in North Idaho. And then, on the 19th of June, the day after the State Board meeting, will be the ICCC meeting, which is the three presidents and the Board Chair, Chairs, and they will be meeting with Jerry G. to discuss common issues related to the community colleges in this state. At this point, I'd like to call on Graydon to talk about a retention program, and as you know, our retention has been a major initiative for us with the Village Project that has significantly increased retention, and we have a, a new project that is being put in place, and it's called Give Me Five, and so I'd like Graydon to describe that for you.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, members of the Board, President Dunlap, and other guests. I'm pleased to have the opportunity to share with you a little bit about a program we'll be rolling out tomorrow, is our first OARS. You're probably familiar, OARS is our mandatory orientation program for all new degree-seeking students coming to the college for next fall semester. As a part of that, we've been working with the Student Services Team, the Communications and Marketing Team, and members of President's Cabinet and other faculty and staff that'll want to be involved, to put together what is a smaller version of what we would probably call intrusive advising, asking each one of our employees to adopt, if you will, five new degree-seeking students here. So tomorrow, when they come here for OARS, we're going to have members of our staff that'll meet them here, they'll give them their contact information, they'll receive their contact information in return, and they will essentially be like an accountability partner for that student during their first year, so they're going to be the one that the student can reach out to and say, I'm having problems, where do I go for this? They provide those resources and the direction, and if the students don't reach out to them, they'll be a bit intrusive in that they'll reach out to the student. If they haven't heard from them, they'll contact them through text or through email or through phone call and just say, how are you doing? How's school going? What can we do to help you be successful? So it's really another effort at kind of trying to walk our talk. We're that small college that cares about our students, wants them to be successful, and we're going to be real intentional in having our employees work directly with students on a one-on-one basis, helping to ensure their success. So I'm really proud of the team that's been working to put that together, and look forward to the fact, we anticipate at least initially about 100 to 125 of our employees being involved, multiply that by the five, so we've got six, more than 600 students that would be impacted out of entering class of close to 2,000. As more employees get involved, we think that we'll have that kind of relationship with all of our new students coming to the college, so it's another one of those efforts to make this a better place for our students. Thank you.
Thank you, Graydon. And lastly, I'd like to ask Mark Browning to give an update on the groundbreaking ceremony for our new CTE facility.
Thank you, President Dunlap. Madam Chair, members of the Board, as you know, June 17th is the date that's been set aside for the ceremonial groundbreaking for the new CTE facility out on Lancaster Road. The event is scheduled to run approximately 90 minutes from 4 o'clock to 5:30. We will be running either vans or buses here from campus that will accommodate, we have nine vans, I think, total, and are they all running? Pretty close. That will accommodate guests who are here for the State Board of Education meeting, who have all been invited as well, and if you'd like to join for the ride out there, that would be certainly our pleasure to do that. The program is very simple, it is a ceremonial groundbreaking, we will have some brief remarks, we'll turn a little bit of dirt, and we'll kick off the unofficial fundraising at that point for the new facility that we anticipate to open in fall of next year. Of course, all invited, we're looking forward to having you out there, and we'll have you back here by 5:30 in time for your evening events with the members of the other institutions and the State Board who will be here in town.
Thank you, Mark. Madam Chair, that concludes our presentation. Madam Chair, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Dunlap, Board. Any questions for Dr. Dunlap or Grayden or Mark? Well, I would just like to say that it's only a twelve-minute drive from my house, so I don't need the van ride, but I think it's great that you're setting it up for our visitors. And some great, great comments about the, what did you call it? High five?
Give me five.
Give me five. That is, that's awesome. Constantly looking for ways to retain students. That's great.
You had a question?
Yes.
Just following up on the Give Me Five. The folks that are so far participating, are they all faculty? Is it staff from anywhere on campus? How does that work?
The invitations just went out, and so the first ten that'll be working with the program tomorrow represent Student Services and Communications and Marketing folks. But the invitation has been given to President's Cabinet, and I'm anticipating that each one of us will be adopting five as well. The President gets ten, just by virtue of his position. Yes. And certainly, all the rest of our employees here will be given that opportunity if they'd like to participate. It's a voluntary program, but we've had a great response from our employees wanting to be a part of that.
Which I think is a testimonial to the enthusiasm all of our folks have for taking care of our students. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next, Trustee Meyer and Trustee Nielsen, if you would share the K-Tech Board Report.
How about if I start? Because one of the things I was going to highlight is that the groundbreaking, we had a K-Tech Board meeting today. The K-Tech is excited and happy to have us out there and probably would be willing to participate in whatever way you've determined. But there was clear enthusiasm for that today at our Board meeting. The month-to-month Board meetings, which usually occur the very Wednesday we have our Board meeting, so I can carry all my papers from one place to another, one of the things we were asking about in our Board meeting today was enrollment. Because again, part of our role here is to be sure we, as a Board, are setting up policy that will help folks participate not only in K-Tech, but then slide onto us. And I think the enrollment was about five hundred and seven this year. And Ron, you're always happy to recite the number of folks who complete K-Tech. Would you like to tell me again what that number is?
Ninety-seven point three was the number that they registered for high school students that graduate with a high school diploma, a certificate of completion, a job offer or commitment to go to continued education or into the armed forces, ninety-seven point three. They're currently attracted to be somewhere in the ninety-four, and they're still trying to get the rest of the data. But as Judy pointed out, last year was a good year, and they started out saying that they had commitment at four eighty-eight. That's what we reported last month. But now they're up to five oh-seven, and they're stuck with that tough decision, which is where are they turning the kids away? There's, I think, three of our classes that are oversold by a significant amount, and so they're going to try to see what they could do to accommodate it. But it's a good problem to have, so.
That about covers everything we had. I think that completes our report from K-Tech. Other than we continue, as NIC Board members, to be sure that our staff is working closely with their staff, and the report we have is that's going well. We'll be ready for the onslaught of folks that come to participate in NIC.
That's fantastic. Mr. Nielsen? Did you, you scratched your head. Is that what you?
Yeah, because it itched.
Thought you wanted to be recognized. Well, I'll tell you, I just want to thank you both for continuing to serve on that Board. It's a great opportunity, a great partnership, and it is such a positive thing for the college and for K-Tech and for our students. So thank you. Mr. Trustee Howard.
I guess I have a question. I think I've asked it before, and I'm not sure that there's an answer yet, quite frankly, available. But the ninety-seven point three percent of those from K-Tech, I take it, that are graduating with either a diploma, with a diploma, are either going on to further education, military, or a job, if I understand your statistics correctly. What would be helpful for me, as a trustee here, would be to determine how many of those students would be coming to NIC. And it helps us, I think, in our planning to know through the K-Tech program whether or not they're moving into the CTE facility programs or into general education. And so some kind of tracking, if we can do it, I think will help us in future planning in terms of making sure that we can coordinate as much as possible programs between K-Tech and NIC. And although I appreciate the ninety-seven point three percent is a success rate, it really doesn't say much about how many of those students are going to be coming on to NIC.
Madam Chair.
Sorry.
Madam Chair, Ken, you brought that up last time, and I quoted the statistic that was given to Mr. Dunlap, which is, oops, there was my water, ninety-seven point three percent. But out of those fifty-five percent, fifty-five of the students went on to the same skillset that they were taking there. So, and I think Joe will be happy to send that to, I think I have it as well, but there, our executive director gave a complete breakdown by skill, CTE skill, and where these kids continued on with the name. So I believe the number was forty-five or seven, forty-seven. I can't remember which one it was.
And that's the number we talked about today, and you're right. Ken, we did ask at our next Board meeting to have some more numbers on end-of-school year, how folks are doing, and where they're going next. And that's clearly part of what I think our representation on the Board is, to keep that information coming to our staff.
Thank you. And a follow-up to that, Ken, is that we did talk about the day in the meeting and that Tim Fortune is as interested as at as anybody, but he is still trying to nail each one of the individual kids down, students down, by saying, "Where are you going? What are you doing?" And some of these kids are saying, "I'm going on to continued education. Where are you going? What are you doing?" And he hasn't got all that yet, so.
And I think, as we all know, students in June may have a different perception than they do by September. So it's always a moving target that, are you mopping up on us again?
Well, thank you both for that. You know, you're both in a unique position where you represent both entities, and it's kind of a good position to be in, that you can help us track that. So, thank you.
We'll be working on that.
All right. That takes us to Old Business, Tab One, Second Reading, Revised Fundraising Policy seven point zero-three. Rayelle Anderson, please join us.
Madam Chair, Members of the Board, colleagues, and guests. My pleasure to come before you for the second reading of Policy seven point oh-three. There's been one revision requested by Trustee Howard, and on the very bottom of page one, the very final sentence, we have changed the word "or" to "and." So the sentence shall read in the very last, it'll say, "All gifts of cash, equipment, real estate, and other items of value shall be accepted through the North Idaho College Foundation, Inc., unless otherwise specified by the donor, and with mutual agreement by the college, and then only with the prior approval of the college president," and. So that has been changed from "or" to "and," as requested last month, the Director of Development Department. The one that, as I read this evening again, I realized we should have removed the slash as well, right after Development Department on that same sentence. And if you're okay with that, we can make that change.
Thank you, Rayelle. Board, this is the second reading. Any questions, comments? Trustee Howard.
I'd just like to make a motion that we approve the Revised Fundraising Policy seven point oh-three with the amendment of removing the slash.
Thank you.
I'll second it with the slash.
Motion and a second, discussion?
One question. This is the policy, which is our role to do. In addition to that, there's a procedure, which we happen to see, I think, in the process, but we really have no role in poking at that other than if somebody has some issue. But otherwise, it's policy that we're working on, and this is the policy that we'll be following up on now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Judy, did you want to see the procedure? I have a copy of it here.
I do, too, and I just want, thank you, Todd. At one point, we wondered about that. It always helps me understand the policy if I see what the procedure is for implementing it. But I just want to be sure I was clear on, it's a policy that we're working on. Thank you.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you, Rayelle.
You're welcome.
Board, that takes us to Tab Two, our second reading, Grants Coordination Policy seven point zero-three point zero-one. Rayelle Anderson.
Very good. There are no revisions from last month to this month, and I'll stand for questions.
Trustee Meyer.
So what we're seeing is the same as we saw last time, which is what I found in my notes, too. Then clarification on the second page where the authority word comes about, second paragraph, "Any employee applies for grant or seeks to enter," and I see an red S. "Seeks to enters into," so that was just, I think, grammar part of it? Is that like a slash? Do we just take it out?
Just put that other slash back in there.
Okay.
Okay, go back, Judy.
Yep, second page, authority, second paragraph. "Any employee applies for grant or seeks to," and the word "enter" has an S with it?
We had crossed out the S.
There's a slash through the S.
"Any employee applies for a grant or seeks to enter into a contract on behalf of North Idaho College must first have the prior approval." So the S is actually stricken.
Board, any other questions on this policy? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I move that we approve Policy number seven point oh-three, point oh-one.
And I will second that, as long as we take the S out.
All right.
I do have a question.
Certainly. A motion and a second, discussion. Trustee Banducci.
This is to Mr. Martin. As we look at these two policies and their procedures, it occurs to me that I want to confirm that we're going to have these all under one umbrella for oversight as component units, and that they'll be accounted for in the overall funding picture, in our audit, in our filings with the state, and everything else. I think we've had an issue of some separate entities operating. It's been a little bit of the Wild West. So under the Director of Development and Foundation, how does that seamlessly dovetail into you and your office as you watch over all the money?
The component units, we work with the audit firm to determine what qualifies as component units each year, and the foundation does fall under the component unit clause. And so we work with the Development Department to ensure that everything is filed on time, and then we actually do another review of that as it's incorporated into the NIC audit.
Okay. But that the foundation is still going to have a separate audit, so are they going to provide then a little addendum like we've seen previously?
Correct.
So we really won't have full insight on that, but we'll have the Booster Club fully incorporated at this point.
We have, we have fully incorporated the NIC Foundation. They have their own audit. We take that audit and incorporate the appropriate pieces into our audit. Currently, the Booster Club is not a component unit, but we have worked with the Booster Club leadership to get monthly reports of status to make sure that we are following all the appropriate laws and regulations on behalf of the Booster Club.
Follow-up question, please. So right now, you're not categorizing the Booster Club as a component unit?
That is correct. It is not material to qualify as a component unit currently.
Based on what criteria do you say that?
Based on a review by our independent audit firm and the fact that their fiscal size doesn't make it material as oversight for the college.
So scope of funds involved, absolute amount of dollars, even though they are contributing to our students and our athletes and...
So, Trustee Banducci, do you want to make this a separate agenda item? We can do that.
Well, I question, I question that. Based on the definitions that I've seen of component units and the documentation that I've seen.
I think we can make that an agenda item and discuss it in the future, but we'll get back to this policy.
Well, I think we need to get everything under Chris's oversight, and I think we need to have tighter reins on the various entities that could be defined as component units. If they're touching money, and money's touching students, then I think they need to fall under our purview, and we need to make sure we have the proper oversight and have them defined as component units.
So we'll make that a future agenda item, and we'll have you answer to us at that time. Back to this policy. Board, any further questions on this particular policy? We have a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Did we need to, did you vote aye?
I did.
Oh, thank you. I'm sorry. I can't hear from over here. Thank you. All right. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rayelle. That takes us to Tab Three, Second Reading, Instructor-Initiated Withdrawal Policy five point zero-four, point zero-two. Lita Burns.
Madam Chair, Members of the Board, colleagues, I am before you to present Policy five point oh-four, point oh-two, Instructor-Initiated Withdrawal for a second reading. And I would like to point out that, as you all ensure recall, that there was a lengthy discussion on this policy, and we took it back to the Senate after having Dr. Larry Briggs and Alex Harris work on this and making sure that the wording worked for both students and for faculty. And we did make a couple of changes. You will note in the policy that we removed the words in the first sentence, "or other actions." That was the important piece of it. But then we also just cleaned up the grammar a bit, and so now it reads, "Withdrawal of student who fails to meet course requirements and interferes with learning of others in the class." And that was the change that we made. And the students who were involved and who reviewed this policy, although it was not in a formal setting, but informally did agree that this policy was, would meet students' needs as well. And then I'm sure that you have included in your board packet the procedure. And again, we made the procedure consistent with the policy in the way that the procedure opens in terms of making that first sentence consistent. And then a couple of changes that we made to the procedure were at the request of students related to the number of days that they were allowed before that they would have to contact the instructor if they did not agree with the decision. We increased that time from forty-eight hours to three working, or three business days, I should say. That was consistent within the policy. Made a couple grammatical changes, and then also added me back in somehow. We had left me off the final decision-making process of the appeal, and so I was added back into that. So those were the changes to the procedure as well. And the policy is before you for approval. Any questions?
Thank you. Board, any questions for Dr. Burns?
I have a question.
Trustee Banducci.
First off, I do appreciate the adjustments you've made. I know one of the concerns extending to the three days, and that was, you know, if an email was sent, if they didn't check their email account, and we discussed some of the various scenarios that could be encountered. So it looks like we've beefed up the communication and it's more time to it. The one question I would have, Lita, when we have the "fails to meet course requirements" and "interferes with the learning of others," the procedure spells out the process very well of the withdrawal process, but what I don't see anywhere is the definition of when we say interfere with, interferes with the learning of others. Is that kind of just at the discretion of the instructor, or do we have some rules of thumb that we're kind of going by on that one? I mean, to me, interfering would be standing up and shouting in the middle of the class or disrupting the learning environment. What are you guys looking at for that?
There are no specific guidelines, and yes, it is primarily left to the discretion of the instructor. The behaviors that you just described, though, however, probably would fall under the code of conduct part of it, and then, so we have a different policy for that. I think I have used as an example in the, previously, and I'll bring it up again because I think it's a good example to explain what a behavior might be that would, one, be not meeting the course requirements and interfering with the learning of others, would be a case where we have a seminar format for a classroom, where students work together on a project and engage on a daily basis on a project. If a student would come to class and not engage, they're not being disruptive, their behavior is not such that we would want to physically remove them from the classroom, but yet their lack of participation, one would lead to their failure in the course, and secondly, may impact the learning of others. So in that situation, we certainly would want to have them be withdrawn.
No, that's a good example. That makes sense. I understand that. Okay. So their lack of participation, just being passive, affecting the other team members, affects their grades, so interfering. Okay. Reasonable?
Thank you. Board, any further questions? Trustee Howard.
Thank you for giving us the procedure as well as the policy here. It helps, I think, us understand the application of the policy, at least how it's presently being applied, and the changes that you've made. I appreciate that. I do have a question, though. The last sentence of the policy says, "The student has the right to appeal the decision of the instructor to the appropriate division chair." And yet, the procedure is much more extensive than that. It's a, and I like the procedure, but I don't like the policy, quite frankly, because the procedure gives a three- or four-step appeal process, which is the kind of due process I was looking for when I talked to you about it last time. So I would like to see, quite frankly, this policy statement. The student has the right to appeal the decision according to the procedure. The student has the, the right to appeal the decision according to the procedure. Or something akin to that. And not restricting it to the division chair, because once we set that policy, I'm afraid we've, we've, we've affected the procedure too.
Madam Chair, Trustee Howard, that certainly was a terrible oversight on my part. And would it suffice, or do you want me to add more, but would it suffice to put a period after instructor and just take, take that last, to the appropriate division chair out? Or do you want to add per the procedure? Because we can add that as well.
I think that, since we, we're not going to describe the appeal process in the policy. It doesn't make really any difference whether we end it after instructor or put some other words after that, quite frankly.
So a period there would work?
So the period behind instructor, I think, would work, yes.
And I would hope that we would not need to take that back to center for that.
Say the wording again. Trustee Howard.
Sorry.
Trustee Banducci.
Yes, ma'am. I'm noticing I have a procedure in my board book, a second procedure under this tab, 5.02, with no effective date. Am I the only one that has that? I'm wondering with that one. It says, the title, it's Academic Probation Suspension and Disqualification.
Madam Chair, Trustee Banducci, that is a policy that will be being presented later in our agenda. It is for first reading, Tab Seven. So it may have just got placed out of order because that revised academic probation suspension and disqualification, 5.02, is Tab Seven.
Trying to connect the dots, thank you.
Trustee Howard.
I would like to move the approval of Policy 5.04.02 with the instruction, with the insertion of a period after the word instructor in the last sentence and deleting the words to the appropriate division chair.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
A second from Trustee Nielsen. Further discussion?
So I want to be sure, what we've done here, we put the period, appeal the decision of the instructor.
Period.
Period. So automatically then, the procedure is in place to set the zone for how we do it. Thank you.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Trustee Nielsen.
I would like to make a motion that we postpone Tab Four our operating budget until sometime next month so that our board has the appropriate amount of time to review the new data that was received just last Friday and some additional information that's being requested.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
I will second that motion.
Discussion? Trustee Howard.
We've had the budget information in front of us since the first reading. Up in San, even before we went to Sandpoint, we had a workshop on it. I know there's been additional information requested. Quite frankly, I've been out of town and I received the information and I'm quite content with the opportunity to re, to have, had an opportunity to review it. But I also find that in the additional information, what I'm finding is that, as a board, we seem to be developing a tendency to want to have so much detail that we're forgetting that our job is to develop policy and overall approve or disapprove the budget. It's not to make the budget. And I'm afraid that more and more, we're tending to get into details that are really beyond our role. It's certainly, we have the authority to create that role for ourselves. I think the statute gives us that. I'm not saying we don't have the authority to do it, but I think it's outside the role traditionally of this board of setting policy. That passing the budget is a responsibility to take a look at the budget as a whole and to either pass it or disapprove it. And if we disapprove it, it goes back to the administration and they have to make adjustments in it that will meet the disapproval. To wait another month to make, to, to, make a decision on the, on the budget, I think would handicap a number of things. Number one, I know that there are students registering now and they're not paying their tuition because we don't know what the tuition's going to be, it hasn't been approved or not. There are other people that have to start making plans about classes and we haven't, we haven't approved the budget. I think it's, you know, we certainly have the information ahead of us to be able to do that tonight.
Madam Chair.
Trustee Nielsen.
You know, Ken, I disagree with you. First of all, is this is a sized budget that I deal with my own company all the time and I've done this for many, many years. I've got twenty hours invested in this budget and you, do you assume that, that we're going to go through, we've, we've walked backwards and forwards on this, we're going to pass this? How can we pass a budget tonight that we're still waiting for unanswered questions? We asked questions, we're still waiting, classroom size and some understanding of this, and we're still waiting. We've, we've been asked to give employees a two-step, a four percent increase, and then we asked for a salary comparison. We didn't have a salary comparison. How can we ask for a four percent increase for our, our, our faculty and administration? We need to know where we stand. To just say it's a four percent and they're entitled to that, then, we're not saying it isn't right, but we just got the information. Friday, late afternoon on a three-day weekend, we finally get the information and we're already supposed to digest? I think that's wrong. We've done the comparison, primary look, is that some of these with the four-step increase have a premium over CSI, CWI from seventeen to twenty-six percent more than what we're, that, that, than what they're being paid. Remember, we lost twenty-nine percent of our FTE students last year and the budget continues to go. The, the, the citizen that came here today asked a question, how do we keep raising this? The question is, is if we have reduction in revenue, what are we doing to increase in our budget? If we take the average faculty teacher, we take the benefit packages and we annualize out, out, that's close to ninety-six thousand dollars. I'm not saying that's, let me finish.
I, well, I, I absolutely intend for you to finish, I do. But we need to focus just on your motion and that opens up for discussion.
So this is all part, and respectfully, Christie, this is all part of the analysis that needs to be done for us to be able to say that we have a two-step process, that we do not have the statistical data. You say it doesn't need to be. Today, everything that we're doing is relevant to what we're doing because ninety, Chris, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe it's eighty-five percent of our total budget is salaries and benefit packages. Is that not true?
Of the total budget, that's correct.
So we're talking about eighty-five percent of our budget and we're not talking about doing any wage comparison. I've never heard of an institution being public or private that doesn't take that into consideration. So I respectfully ask that we do this until we can do this. And if you want to go pass a budget on one vote, but I think that you're doing a disservice to our taxpayers and to the people here that want somebody, we were trusted as trustees to look into the numbers. And if Mr. Howard doesn't want to look anymore, that's fine.
Trustee Nielsen, I think that at some point, we have to, we certainly need to have some sort of respect for each other. And no accusation about who's done their homework. We're all here for the right reasons. You have a motion, you have a second. Trustee Banducci, did you have further discussion on the motion?
I do.
The actual motion, thank you.
First off, I don't think he said Ken didn't do his homework. I think what he says, he doesn't want to look at the numbers anymore, he doesn't have to.
Okay, well, I'd like to focus on the motion, thank you.
But on the motion, I do have a fundamental disconnect with Trustee Howard also. And quite frankly, I think we are compelled and I do think that we are called to be fiduciaries. So I think it's incumbent upon us to be looking at the budget in total, at the numbers, and diving down to see what the numbers represent and what they mean. I had several meetings, a couple hours with Chris last week. I also have quite a bit of time devoted into this budget. And so I think it is an appropriate process with the additional information that we continue to get that I don't believe has been properly vetted or looked at, I'm going to say that out loud, by everybody equally, that we could take more time and evaluate this and see where we really are.
All right, well, we have a motion and a second. Trustee Meyer.
I'd like to speak to the, the motion and the topic we talked about earlier about is our board an administrative board or a policy board? And my perception is we're a policy board. We have established some policies for our staff to follow, which are be frugal, be effective. Now I think it's time to have, we may have more information, but I see none of that information affecting our policy of setting a budget that we believe, board members need to choose how they believe, I believe, is achieving what I believe is our policy of, of cost-effectiveness. And so I'm sorry that folks feel like they don't have all that information. But some of that information, I don't think is appropriate for us as a board to be poking at. That's what staff is supposed to do and, in my opinion, has done well. I wish you could pull more rabbits out of the hat. But as our president has explained to us at our workshop, you've added programs, I think six or so more, that we're managing faculty, which is always difficult. Part of choosing to pass the policy, pass the budget now would be so that contracts for employees can be issued, so folks can make plans. I don't, I, I just think the policy is what we're working on here is in place for us to pass the budget.
Thank you, Trustee Meyer. For myself, I am prepared to move forward. I have studied every document that's been provided. I want to move forward because I feel that delaying the budget discussion, the biggest impact is on our students. Our financial aid will be held up. And that is just not something I'm willing to do. I think we've had sufficient time to look at the information. And being able to conduct our own salary study based on bits and pieces of information is really not something appropriate for us. If we want to do something like that, then we need to hire a consultant to do that. And we've done that in the past and I would support that kind of discussion. But tonight, I'm prepared to move forward with the discussion. But I'll call for an actual vote. All in favor of Trustee Nielsen's motion to delay the budget second reading?
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Nay. All right, motion did not carry. We will move forward with the second reading of the college budget. Chris Martin, thank you.
Madam Chair, trustees, thank you for this opportunity to present the second reading of the FY16 General Fund Operating Budget. The college is prepared to propose this budget as balanced. And it reflects the anticipated changes in revenue and expenditures for the FY16 budget. The proposed FY16 budget reflects a 1.27 percent increase over FY15. The proposed budget also includes the two-step increase for faculty, full-time faculty and staff. We are requesting approval of the second reading of this budget.
Question?
Trustee Nielsen.
So the balance of the budget, Chris, was, was there an increase to our students for this to balance the budget?
There was a mix of increased revenue from both the state as well as increase in tuition and fee revenue.
So you see no relevance to asking for more money from our students, tuition and fees, to be able to balance our budget that maybe could be balanced if we were a little bit more fiduciary responsible and in a downturn market, maybe cut back some of the expenses? You don't think there's any relevance to that, Chris?
Trustee Nielsen, I think that your question is very appropriate, but to the board, because he has just brought forward for the administration a budget for us to discuss.
He's the chief financial officer.
But we'll be making the decisions. And so I, I think it's more appropriate to have us answer that question.
Well, then, then...
I have a question. Is he actually going to do a presentation or is he just taking questions and then we move forward? What's the second reading going to be comprised of? I guess I'm asking to know where we're going to have opportunities for questions and to point things out.
Sure, we can ask him to go through the entire budget again for us or we can
Just to know what was planned.
Go off of the information that we've all been provided and have. And I would leave that to the pleasure of the board. What's the pleasure of the board?
If, if, Madam Chair, if what you're referring is, is that, that Mr. Martin has now said this is the second reading and that we have a balanced budget and then the next step for us is to go forward and say yea or nay, I think we need to have some discussions. We've already said we don't want to postpone this. I think that this is one of the things that we're responsible to do. This is, this is not, this is our job.
Certainly, I think we all agree.
As a trustee is to, is to be accountable for the tax dollars that are being done. So now you're saying, do we want to go forward? I think we do. And so the question is, is we have a balanced budget. That's a general statement. But the balanced budget, Mr. Martin, is we, we couldn't balance a budget without raising. We took the four hundred and forty-six thousand dollars worth of new growth into our community that didn't put any additional burden on this college. So that's four hundred and forty-six worth of money free. And then we put another half a million dollars on by raising tuition and fees to both our local and out-of-territory. There's another half million, so there's a million dollars that we had to go find to be able to balance this budget. We didn't go look at some things that we could possibly do to reduce our budget to a level that we use those as an option. And I think that we've had tuition increases from our students for the last, what is it, three years? You know, after...
That is correct.
Last three years, we've raised tuition. I think it's time that we have to have some responsibility to say that we're not raising our fees to our students anymore. Maybe this is part of the reason why we've had a decline in enrollment by almost thirty percent.
Okay, Trustee Howard.
Obviously, we're going to have some discussion on this budget tonight.
Thank you.
I'd like to start by making a motion that we approve the budget for fiscal year fifteen, sixteen.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Meyer, seconds of motion.
Discussion?
Oh, so if there's no discussion...
Hold on, hold on, hold on, please, recognize the chair. Please, thank you.
Okay.
Trustee Banducci.
All right, I, I've got a few short questions for Chris. Couple things, since Ken's got the motion out, that's fine. As we look at this, a couple things have come up as we've looked at the teachers' compensation. And one of the things that we saw at the workshop was we put zero up for last year and we had some other numbers. But yet, we've had some state mandated increases for the teachers over the last couple of years, correct?
That is correct, we had CEC from the state.
Second question, you did, you started from scratch. You and I have had extensive discussions, we spent a couple hours together. Instead of building off what was done two years ago, you started and you built from scratch and you put these numbers together for the salary comparisons and, and came up with what the compensation looks like for our instructors so that we could see them relative to CWI, CSI, LCSC, UFI, a number of examples. As you look at the compensation, in your professional experience, in your professional opinion, would you say that we pay our teachers well?
I would say that we have a fair compensation for our employees.
Okay. Chris, as we look at this budget, one of the things that we've been trying to do is we've been trying to balance out a little bit the costs for the folks in district because of the burden that the taxpayers are paying versus the out-of-district, other four counties that we support and anybody else. One of the thoughts that I heard was that it would be nice if we could not have a tuition hike on the in-district students, but maybe go forward with the tuition hike for the out-of-district students. When we had talked last, you had told me that the step costs and we, we talked about, excuse me, the cost of the steps and we talked about the cost of the tuition increases and what, what the revenue that would bring in. If we were to break those two apart, do you happen to know what the number would be if we only raised the tuition as suggested for the out-of-district, as proposed?
I don't have that exact number in front of me, but it, it would be, the cost of a step is essentially six hundred thousand dollars.
Right.
So we, we would be very...
It was about five seventy-five for the whole tuition increase.
The whole tuition increase.
Yeah, how, how much of that was in district with the extra five dollars on top of the student rec fee?
There was five dollars for all students and then three dollars on top for out-of-district students.
Yes, sir. Eight dollars for them.
Eight dollars for them, correct. I don't have that exact number, but it would be a reduction in that, absolutely. It wouldn't be the full amount.
Any idea on the scale of that, the scope of it?
Wouldn't be the full amount. You could reduce it several dollars.
The reason I'm asking is because that would be some nice money to have in reserve if we say propose to do a one-step increase, no tax increase, and then we don't raise tuition on our in-district, we'd still have a balanced budget with maybe even a couple dollars to spare. And wouldn't that be surprising if we didn't feel the need to spend every single dollar that we had? Especially with the joint-use facility coming up and many other things coming up.
Thank you, Mr. Banducci. Board, any further discussion? Trustee Nielsen.
Chris, just let's ask me, let me ask you a question. What's happened, looking at historical data, which is all part of a budgetary process, if you look at where we are today and where we were four years ago in the, in the consistent decline in enrollment, if this continues for another two years, what is, what are we going to do to balance this budget? Continue to raise tuition and continue to put... Continue to raise tuition and continue to put a higher burden on our local taxpayers? Is that our option?
Madam Chair?
Thank you.
Trustees, I would say we have several options beyond just that. We would review all operations, but the college has multiple revenue streams beyond, beyond tuition. We have local property taxes. We could go to the state, but we would also have to look very heavily at our operating expenses. There's no doubt there at all.
So, back to my question is, our three sources of revenue, our state taxes, which we have no influence over, what appears to be, and has been flat, almost flat for the last 10 years. We look at our property taxes, where we've more than doubled our property taxes, so we go to that well, pretty well. And we look at tuition and fees. Those are our only revenue sources, with 85% of our total cost of the school is wages and headcount. So, how do we consider passing a budget without having a wage comparison against other community colleges in the same state that we reside in and Spokane? I don't know how, I have, I guess, being on this college board, one of the most frustrating things is, is they don't, nobody wants to talk about the word accountability when it comes to how do we address something that, to the average-day citizen, seems to be so apparent, which is when we have declining revenue, we have to find some way to cut our budget, and 85% of our budget is salary and benefits. We just, our average is $8,582. $8,582 is the per se, what they call ORP, contribution for every employee. We never talk about that. It's a $8,500 compensation that is there. We don't talk about that. But we're talking about raising tuition to an 18-year-old kid that wants to get an education or to whatever. So, I don't know how we don't address this comparison and the step increase. I don't know how we do it.
Trustee Meyer, she was first saying. Trustee Meyer.
Thank you. What I think we need to think through, as we have described, are sources of revenue. And one of them, we've chosen not to approach this year, was the tax increase. And I think that's one both you've recommended and we've agreed we're not likely, don't want to do. And that essentially puts it back to what we've seen happen throughout our nation and throughout our state, and that's a user fee. Those who use a facility and instruction do get the increase. The magic about what we do is because we have good faculty members to do it. And I believe I've seen the numbers on comparisons, and we're well within the range, both of what you've seen and what materials we've seen as well. I think we want to be sure that we're ready for the CTE program as well. And we've found that those, both facility and faculty, are expensive, and we need to be ready to recruit the very best to teach the state-of-the-art techniques at CTE because we can't, we're not producing a good enough result unless we do that. So, I'm content that, in fact, we have looked at the numbers. We've asked our administration to do that. I always ask about, how's our reserve fund? Because you've identified we have some new projects coming along. And my understanding from, from you all, and I, we as a board are comfortable with the reserve fund we have to get ready for both the CTE building and the joint use building. In addition, thanks to the students' funding, there'll also be a recreation center. So, I think our administration's done a good job of juggling a lot of projects, and I think we're where we should be to have this budget in place.
Trustee Howard.
It is, it is clear to me that this board does want to talk about accountability. We want to talk about accountability on many different levels. You'll recall that over the last couple of years, we've embarked on a trend of policy to try and relieve the Cootin County taxpayers from some of the burden of helping to support the out-of-county students. And that's part of this budget, actually, is to, is to create a tuition differential between out-of-county students and in-county students, reflecting on our desire to help relieve Cootin County taxpayers from some of the burden they've had to bear over the years. That's accountability. You've heard programs here where we're doing everything we can, and I applaud the administration for programs to increase retention and the enrollment programs of trying to mentor people to go to school. The enrollment decline that we've had over the last three years is not something that's happened only at NIC. NIC is not an island in the middle of the United States who has experienced a 30% decrease in enrollment. It's happened all across the country. It's a trend. And it's a recognized trend that's occurred before, and it's tied to the economy. When the economy is poor, enrollment in colleges and universities increases. When the economy starts to gain strength and get better, enrollment in universities and community colleges decreases. As our economy has gotten better, we've seen that decrease. And what I've seen this administration do is go through and, and balance the budget for three years now, I think, without a tax increase. That's accountability. That's accountability to the taxpayers of this county, of not trying to burden them with some of the difficulties that have occurred due to the economy and the enrollment. In terms of the tuition to the students, nobody likes to see the cost of education go up. But I can tell you that when we look at the comparison of the competitors that we have, Spokane Community Colleges, our local community colleges, and other for-profit schools, we are a bargain. Even with this tax, even with this tuition increase, we are a bargain. So, we are not increasing our tuition at a rate that is being unfair to the students. Actually, we're still well within a margin and well below, in some instances, other institutions. That's accountability. I think that there are a lot of trends that are going to be occurring in the future that are going to impact our enrollment. Dual credit is increasing, and you'll see in the budget this year, we're indicating, anticipating, although there may, would be a reduction in full-time enrollment, the dual credit enrollment we're anticipating will increase. And those are great programs that are, that are gaining a lot of popularity. I think a lot of the things that we do is accountability. It's accountability on a broad scale, not just a small scale of saying, if we have a reduction in students, therefore, we have to have a reduction in faculty or a reduction in budget. It's trying to maintain a high quality of education and looking at all the different aspects of education that go into quality and making sure that we don't undermine the quality of the education because of the difficulties that we're facing. And I, I quite frankly, support this budget because I think that's exactly what it's done. I think that we have not had a tax increase this year. We're not proposing a tax increase this year. There is a differential increase in tuition in order to try and further our, our goal of helping to relieve Cootin County taxpayers of the burden that they have to pay and shifting it over to the out-of-county students who use the NIC. So, I support the budget, and I support it for those reasons.
I'm going to take a turn, board. I haven't had any discussion. I'm definitely going to be part of this discussion. So, I want to mention that I don't like the narrative that this is a increase in any way, shape, and form, that this is a raise. I don't like that narrative because it's not factual. Two years ago, I was very, very clear that I did not support the board's direction to freeze the steps on the salary matrix. So, what we effectively did was we told certain employees who maybe worked here for 10 years, we're not going to recognize that you've worked here for 10 years. Now, we're going to say you've worked here for eight, and we're going to freeze your step. And that's what we did. So, two years down the road, that's a huge impact. We have a policy and a salary matrix that we adopted as a board, and we all agreed to. And the reason we did that is because we had did, did a very large study, a wage study that we paid a consultant to do, and we made a statement as a board that we would pay a livable wage. North Auto College would contribute to our employees with a livable wage. So, I was absolutely opposed to freezing salary steps. By bringing them back under this budget, it moves us in the right direction to right a wrong. It is not a raise. It's putting back what we took. Mr. Nielsen, you were next.
Chris, in closing, I want to tell you that you and Sarah do incredible job. I enjoyed the four hours that we spent going through this budget. I enjoyed the openness and the disclosure that you had and that the candid conversation and that. So, this is no reflection to, to the budgeting process. In closing, and I want to say, I, we have the, we have the quarterly press here today. And here is the press article from May 8, 2015. Here's why NIC budget matters to you, and basically went through the whole thing of saying, it doesn't matter to anybody. And it says right down, when it comes down to this, for a college to be best it can be, citizens need to be involved from the ground up, and it starts with the budget. Maybe for you, it starts today. I hope that the taxpayers understand that there is a conflict here on this board today, that the accountability that we need to have to balance a budget and protect this college, it didn't happen today. And that when we think there's some relevance to other educations, that there, and some step program that was created in 2007 by our past president, that this is what we're going to drive this college. I'm saying, we need to address the step, and I think we need to address things like the RIF policy here, because if another year happens, based on what I can see from here, that we can't keep going to the well and driving up our tuition, the state has made it perfectly clear, they're not going to give us any money, and we are now using money that was used for other things towards this career and technical education. I think that we're going to wake, we're going to wake the giant, which is a taxpayer, and they're going to say, now, we want to understand about that budget. And the people that get engaged on this, that are outside this institution, are probably going to have a lot of the same questions that we have, and we're not going to say that we don't think that comparison wages is relevant and get away with that.
Trustee Banducci had already put his hand up. I'll come back to you, Dr. Dunlap. Trustee Banducci.
Not trying to come across as the Grinch, so I'm going to state first off my position. I support a one-step increase. So, I want to say that before I go any further. Now, having said that, when I look at, and I also don't want to increase on the in-district students. I want that $5 off. I want to see that differential a little higher, Ken. $3 differential doesn't really impress me. $8 makes me feel a little better. But I do want to acknowledge some of the work that Chris did. And for the record, I want to give a few statistics and a couple of facts, because he went to Milliman, he went to Mountain States, and he got us some information. He looked at our competition, our competitors, the folks that we're being compared against, whether it be community colleges, SFCC, SCC over in Spokane, CWI, CSI, threw in a couple of the four-year institutions. And I thought it was interesting. In the Mountain States, they had 35 colleges. And on that list of 35 colleges, they rank ordered in 1 to 35 in the average compensation for faculty. We ranked number 12. So, we're in the top third, which is not bad. CSI and CWI, CWI was 22, CSI was number 23. When we look at the metrics compared to LCSC in almost every metric, we exceed their pay. And they're a four-year institution. Same with the folks in Spokane. We're either even or above in almost every metric of what we pay. And it was interesting because they looked at a lot of different categories. As they went through this, they had things like custodian and director and administrative assistant and coordinator and faculty. And so, they broke it down into a lot of different categories, which I thought was very interesting. It gave a lot of insight. They gave a minimum, they gave a maximum, they gave a median, so we could kind of see what you called a midpoint. So, I don't know if that was a, an average or a median, which are two different things, if you know the difference. So, I thought you did a good job with the numbers. And I guess, in looking at the numbers, again, the numbers appear to me to reflect that we're right in the ballgame. And now, whether there was an adjustment or correction that needed to be made, you know, I know that Trustee Wood is very passionate about that, and she said that we had to right the wrong at one point and get it up to speed and make a correction. And there was, and you look at the percentages, and it's been kind of a jig-jag, and there was a bump up to try to get back to even. And then, as you look at the, well, you look at the Wall Street measurement or the CPI, or there's three or four ways to measure inflation. And then, you look at what we've done and what the state has mandated on us the last couple of years. Two years ago, that was 1% straight out, and 1% merit. Last year, that was 1% straight out. So, and I look at the step, I have the step from the budget. Here's the FY14 budget process. Here's the FY15. I've got all the notes that we're doing, you know, next year. And I look at the step, or the chart, I've got it somewhere, sorry. And when I compare this one to this one, it's higher. So, absolute wages have increased. So, it's not like we have fallen behind or been negligent to compensate our instructors. So, I think, based on the current budget situation and funds, I would like to see a one-step increase. I'd like to see us take off the $5 increase in tuition for the in-district students, and I'd like to actually bank a couple more dollars. And I do know that there's been discussions regarding the reserve. You and I talked about that. I know Mr. Martin has addressed that with various trustees, and I think the reserve has come back off the table to tap into because we may need that, all of it, and then some, with some of the other things on the table right now. So, I'm glad to see nobody here is proposing to dive into the reserve. Thank you, Christie. You and I had a little philosophical difference about that, and I appreciate where you've come to on that. And I think if we add a little bit more with the $8 out of tuition, with a, with a 2% increase for the instructors, I think we're accomplishing several things. And I, I think that's fair at this time. So, again, I'm not going to beat up on any of this. I just think, I look at the numbers. I have a Bachelor's of Science in Economics, as some of you may know, and I've done numbers, and I'm in the financial industry, and I'm a fiduciary. I carry SIR7 in the securities industry. I'm a licensed SIR agent. I deal with this every day with people, millions of dollars I work with. And I think that that's a good compromise and makes sense from a fiduciary standpoint where we cover. Because I believe Mr. Martin has been reserved in expressing some of his concerns as we look out, and he wants to do a three-year rolling budget and look at these things and a little more macro look and a 10,000-foot view, because we've been very isolated. We do this in a very bubble, one-year snapshot. And I think that's maybe not the best way to do it in an industry, and even in the military, we don't do that. We're at least looking at two or three, and we usually have a five and a 10-year. And so, I think we're a little short-sighted right now at how we're viewing this, and I think we need to step back and look at this in a little more long-term perspective, not knowing what the next year or two are going to look like. So, I don't feel the need that if I do get a little more extra money from tuition increases, that I've got to spend it all right now. That's where I'm at. We always, balanced budget sounds good. I mean, I do like that term. I'm a fan of that. I'd like to see a balanced budget amendment at the national level, to be quite, quite honest. But I think right now, I'd like to adjust how we're balancing the budget right now and maybe even have a slight surplus. And I'd like, after putting the rec center at 37 now and then 87, I'd really like to not put another five bucks on the folks in district. I mean, I've got people that own a business, they're paying on that. They own a home, they're paying on that, and they got a kid at the college, and they're paying on that. So, we're tapping them three times. So...
Thank you, Mr. Banducci.
My thought.
Dr. Dunlap.
Just a couple of comments. There's some things that get overlooked in these conversations, and so, I just want to revisit those very briefly. As Trustee Howard mentioned, we have not raised taxes in the last two years, and the proposal this year does not include a tax increase. Over the last three years, as enrollment has declined, we have reduced the operating budget by $3 million. And in addition to that, when our enrollment peaked in 2012 until today, we have 62, 62 less full-time employees. So, the notion that we have not been responsible or looked at how to adjust the budget based on enrollment and budget just doesn't hold water. In addition, the state has clawed back money because of enrollment decline against all institutions. And so, that has been a reduction in our budget as well, and that's something that is never talked about. In addition, at the last budget workshop, I showed a slide that showed probably on the order of 10 to 14 career and technical programs that were started during the past three years during this downturn in enrollment. And it would have been very easy for this college to just say, yeah, we don't have the money. We're not going to support... money, we're not going to support business and industry in this community, but no, what did we do? We went after grant money. And that was hard work that was done by our grant writers, and our faculty, and our staff. And we put in place programs like the aerospace program that had four different tracks. We had the healthcare program, $6.4 million to put in place eight career and technical health programs and work with business and industry in this community. And so when the cry has gone out, primarily from Mr. Nielsen, about this college not supporting career and technical programs in the past, I would say, we have risen to the challenge, and we have put in place those programs that support business and industry at the expense of this college by going after that grant money. And so I think this college has been extremely responsible. In terms of philosophical and ideological differences with regard to the budget, with regard to salaries, with regard to a step system, those discussions, we welcome, and we are certainly willing to address that. But at the time we are trying to finalize the budget is not the 11th hour to solve those issues. Those are ongoing discussions that need to take place throughout the year, and if there is an issue that the board thinks we need to resolve, then we will do that. But to hold the budget hostage because of those differences, the timing just doesn't work. And then lastly, what I want to mention, on graduation day, Chris Martin was handed a note for all the documents that were desired for this discussion. And so it was that following Monday that we could get started on that and create those documents, and those were provided to the board this last Friday. And one of the documents was a cost of living analysis between Twin Falls, Spokane, and Nampa. And lo and behold, the cost of living in Coeur d'Alene is higher than any of those three areas, which in fact is typically reflected in wages. And so in an effort to cherry pick the information, we then had a suggestion by trustees that maybe we ought to look at Post Falls or Rathdrum, because we have people who live in those communities. And that's not how cost-of-living comparisons are done, that's not how salary comparisons are done. And so I guess my point is that we have, from my perspective, been very responsible about the budget, and we are trying to honor the step system that has been in place for many, many years and is part of the college policy. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Dunlap. Trustee Howard.
A couple of comments. I suspect there was a suggestion that we really need to take a look at our policy and take a longer-term look, and I quite frankly couldn't agree more with that. And I think we've tried to do that. Incrementally, we have been doing that, and we can do better. I don't think there's any question about that. I think the administration knows that. In fact, as Dr. Dunlap just commented to that. We have, over the last four years, adopted programs to put in reserves for replacing equipment and that sort of thing, which we didn't have before. We didn't have any kind of a depreciation schedule or any way of dealing with equipment that needed to be replaced. We've embarked on this program of trying to create a differential tuition, because we recognized the difficulty that it was providing, it was presenting to Cootney County taxpayers. And again, I would agree that an 8% differential would probably be closer to being fair than 3%.
$8, $8.
$8. Excuse me, not 3%. But we're doing that. We've, at least I thought, that we were embarked on a program to do that. Last year, we had an incremental increase of a difference. This year, we have a $3 differential. I anticipate that we're going to continue to do that incrementally, so as not to burden those out-of-county students immediately with a huge increase in their tuition. We want to encourage education to everybody, but we also have to encourage the counties who are not paying taxes to support this institution, to help their students with their tuition. And we've gone to each of the counties and met with the county commissioners, and met with interest groups, to try and encourage them to help their students with a differential tuition that we were forced to embark on, because they don't pay taxes to support this institution the way Cootney County taxpayers do. And we've been especially, I think, sensitive to our obligations to the Cootney County taxpayers and what they do to support this institution, and that's why we started on this differential tuition program. I think that the, the whole idea of examining teacher's salary, faculty's salary, staff's salary, is a very difficult and a complex issue. It's not just a matter of looking at how much money do you make in one area versus another. There are differences in fringe benefits, not just the amount of the fringe benefits, but the number of programs and the kinds of programs that are available, where those programs are, are placed in terms of the economics of the locale that Dr. Dunlap just talked about, the fact that the different cost of living. It is a complex, and I think, difficult analysis to try and find where fairness fits in there and where a fair compensation level is. And I don't think it can be done automatically, quite frankly. The idea of having a salary, an evaluation of appropriate and competitive salary is something that we should embark upon periodically, and hopefully we will do that. But I think where we're at right now is a fair and equitable place. I got to tell you, personally, I'm not a proponent of the step and column process, because I think it can escalate into unreasonable levels if it's just a step and column increase. It has to be in the context of competitiveness with other institutions and other, other salary bases. But we've got to do that as an institution. As a trustee, I don't feel, I don't care how much information you give me, I don't think I'm going to be in a position to make that kind of a complicated analysis. And so I'm, I'm prepared, quite frankly, to, to listen to a proposal, to have some kind of a study done to give us more information for next budget year about a salary competitiveness. But in terms of what I see this year, I see that as being quite fair, given the information we have available to us.
Thank you. Trustee Howard. Trustee Meyer, I'll come back to you.
Following up on a couple of the thoughts, we as a board look at the situation we're in now, and it's clearly one that we had our administration ringing bells along the way, saying enrollment's going to get lower. And sure enough, it did. Hopefully, I think the administration's done a good job of saying world plan for worst-case situation, and hopefully we don't get there either, and so far, we haven't. 10% you've been predicting for lowering enrollment, you all are real busy trying to be sure that doesn't happen. The idea of looking at future budgets is good, and I think after your first 11 months here or so, less than that, you've come to learn more about what this community needs, and our president's already set the stage for that, and we set our policy to say, pay attention. And as trustee Howard mentioned, the, the balance between taxpayers and Cootney County paying for the services and the extra payment that we do, because although other counties do send money, they don't send what it costs to provide the education, and yet, we're still providing satellite programs at all those various outreach centers that were chartered by the legislature to do, serve five counties, but collect money from one. So thanks to our fellow board members, we've been out visiting with county commissioners, and I suspect we'll be visiting with them some more. So I think we are doing some good accountability, and I'm, I'm content with what we have here tonight.
Trustee Banducci.
I will grant you, Ken, that the analysis can be quite an exercise in statistics. And I'm not going to go head-to-head with you, Joe, I don't want to do that, and you and Ron can do that all day if you want, but I will say two things. One is the highest component of the cost was housing, and that was why some people suggested maybe we need to look at the housing on a countywide basis, which does include Post Falls, Rathdrum, Spirit Lake, Athol, Hayden, rather than just Coeur d'Alene, because that, other than the housing metric, the cost of livings were pretty equal or lower in Coeur d'Alene, plus or minus. So the housing is what skewed it, so that's why some folks, so we don't want to cherry pick and just say the housing is what's driving this, say, we're cost more here. Yeah, be like me saying you got no page numbers on your chart there. Here's the deal. As we, as we analyze this, first off, Ken and Ron are both right, the step program is terrible, and we need to get rid of it. I was in the military, and I could have two captains sitting there that both had five years in service, and were in '03, and they make the exact same wage. One could be a doorstop, and one could be the most dynamic officer you've ever seen in a future astronaut or general. So that's, that's no good. It'd be nice to figure out a better way to do it, more merit pay. So I think there's ways we can change it, but we're going to have to put it all on the table and be honest agents and honest brokers about this, so we can talk about the whole thing, whether it be the RIF, whether it be tenure. Mr. Nielsen looked up some statistics where the national trend is going from about 2/3 to 3/4 in tenure to more like about 1/3 in tenure, and adjunct going from just the opposite. Okay, now that's something that we have not done at this college, so maybe that's part of the whole process that we relook at that. You know, the other two sister schools of ours don't play the tenure game, maybe under some different terminology.
So Mr. Banducci, you're going to get back to the budget, I assume?
I am. I'm headed there.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Because it's all part of it, because we're not supposed to, we're not going to try to redo the process here, but those are valid points to bring up later and look at it. But as, as we look at the comparisons, one of the things that we do have to look at, and everybody thinks that we're piling on here, is it is reasonable to look at our expenses, and if 85% of our expenses are personnel, in one form or another, wage, benefits, whatever, then we need to look at, is that an area that either we can decrease, hold the line on, or have, or hold the increases to a reasonable level? And I think as we're looking through this, that's where we've come back to, and I don't think anybody's trying to say that they're not valuable assets to the college. The system, we're stuck with, so we have to work with it. I just think that we need to be reasonable within the system at this time, go forward with, and no one out there.
Thank you for your comments. If I may comment before, I need to have my turn every now and then, Board. Mr. Banducci, your comments on personnel, whether we would hold the line?
I, I understand your comment, however, I, I would like to suggest that when you decide to hold the line, reduce, whatever you choose to do as a board, those are programs we're talking about. So those are programs that we're not going to offer to students. And our role as a community college, we're not-for-profit, we are a community college open to every student that wants to come through these doors and further their education and change their lives. So if we decide that we want to cut programs, cap enrollment, all those decisions, keep in mind, that affects students and what we're going to offer. Now, when you make those kind of decisions, you're generally in such dire financial straits that you have no other options. We're not in that situation, and I would never, ever support cutting programs right now for students that need them, or reducing employees when, when they have jobs that we need them for. And so I would suggest that if we talk about cutting personnel or holding the line, we need to know the real ramifications of what that means.
But they are reviewing programs like OPRV right now.
Certainly, and we will get that information.
Madam Chair, I'd like to call the question.
I think trustee Nielsen has one more comment.
You know, I agree, I agree with Ken that this step is a very complicated, complex, and what showed that was clearly when we got the statistical data that says that we're, had we included all the steps that were promised in the past, that we would be way out of line. So for us to do a check and balance on that and not take that in consideration is wrong. We had this question the first year I came on the board. The administration fought against the step, and that was their recommendation. So now, the administration has changed, not you necessarily, Chris, but we've changed our position on this, and now all of a sudden, that's a good thing to do. I, I agree that we need to understand this, and if the step does not take care of the problem that we need to, to deal with, which is to have fair compensation for our faculty, but we got to have some information that justifies this, and to put this off a couple of weeks, I thought we would get to that, but we're, obviously, we're not. I would second Todd's proposal, which was to go from two steps to one step and to raise tuition to the outside area for the students, but to the taxpayers that are paying their taxes, not burden them with that. That would be a strong consideration for a fair and balanced way to approach this.
We, Mr. Nielsen, we do not have a amendment to the motion.
Okay.
Mr. Howard.
Let's allow you to call the question.
Mr. Howard has called for the question. Board, all in favor of adopting the budget as proposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All against?
Nay.
Aye.
Okay, two against, three, four, budget passes. Thank you, Board. Thank you, administration, for all the effort that you put into this. Chris, you and your team have been wonderful. Thank you. All right.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
If I may, I just want to clarify one thing. A lot of people worked really hard on gathering this data. It wasn't just myself. And HR and Laura Hill's office worked extremely hard pulling that, so I just want to thank the team that worked so hard on providing additional data this last week.
Thank you.
We thank them too.
Yes, absolutely. All right. That takes us to new business, tab five, first reading, college calendars for academic years 2023, Joe. Am I going to be alive then? 2023, 24, and 25. Graydon Stanley. I hope so. Seems a long way out.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, President Dunlap, and other guests. I am so pleased to bring this agenda item to your attention tonight, which is our college calendar, as you know, and you've dealt with in the past, we look several years down the road. In fact, what's in front of you is for those academic years 2023, 24, and 24, 25. Please note that the general format and schedule of our semesters has not at all changed. It's 16, two 17-week semesters and a summer session. The semester is comprised of 16 weeks and one week of final exam. Summer instruction is delivered, as many of you know, in four, six, and eight-week segments, and there are other, there are no other major changes. We include in that, as can be predicted, term dates, commencement, holiday closures, and spring break, some of those other dates that are associated with our operations. We wait to get a little closer to see if we need to make changes, like days to drop classes, other things that affect our operations. But the traditional dates are as they have been in the past. So this is first reading, and I would be glad to answer any questions.
Trustee Meyer.
The classic one I ask every year, you've talked with the school districts to coordinate as much as you can, which is at least the three local school districts. Do we get any coordination out of that?
We get as much as we're able to. That far in advance particularly, they don't work out on their calendar quite as far as we do. We certainly have with the calendar committee that consists of a number of residents of this area who have children in the district. That's a consideration for all of our employees and students as well. So we work on that as much as we can. Trustee Meyer.
Any further questions? Trustee Meyer.
Glad to see the college is providing the four, six, or eight-week sessions in the summer. I think as business people, we always are fretting about use of the facilities, 24 hours a day, seven days a week, particularly as we look at costs, as we build, look at building new buildings. Then the only other observation was, since this is so far out, and we do hope to live that long, but as an institution, I want to be sure this doesn't lock us into, as education changes, as it should be changing, and we provide new and different ways of doing it, this does not lock us into having to stick with this if we learn something, variation, variables come along. Am I comfortable in agreeing to the second, or even approving at the first reading, knowing I have that flexibility for the future trustees to look at?
Thank you. Graydon, is there flexibility in your calendar?
Certainly there is. Madam Chair, trustee Meyer, you certainly have that option as we get a little closer to those dates as well. If there were reasons for us to make changes in our schedule, we would, we would certainly bring a recommendation, or certainly entertain your recommendation for the reasons that would benefit our students, benefit our community.
And trustee Meyer, if you'll make a commitment to be here in 2025. All right, we just have a first reading, no action, so thank you. Tab six, first reading, thank you, Graydon.
Thank you very much.
Any reason to wait on it?
Well, because.
Procedure's better that way, okay, thank you.
Tab six, first reading, board of trustees, meeting calendar, FY15, 16. We're going to be here for that. Thank you, Joe.
Madam Chair and trustees, in tab six, you'll find the proposed meeting schedule for fiscal year 2015, 2016. And as we currently do, the proposed schedule reflects meetings on the fourth Wednesday of the month, with the exception of November and December, where it's the third Wednesday of the month because of Thanksgiving and Christmas. And I'd be happy to try and answer any questions, if you have any.
Board, any questions for Dr. Dunlap?
All right. First reading, thank you for the information. Tab seven, first reading, Revised Academic Probation, Suspension, and Disqualification Policy 5.02. Larry Briggs, Keri Heinz, is Heinz correct? Thank you.
Come forward, please.
Chairwood, members of the Board, President Dunlap, audience, thank you very much for the opportunity to speak to Policy 5.02. We know from work here at NIC, led by Keri and others, and research nationally, that structuring our supports for students in academic difficulty significantly improves their retention and likelihood to persist. This policy positions the college to take an immediate step for why students would recover from poor grades and be able to continue enrollment to achieve their educational goals. This reflects collaboration with students, who had a chance to review this policy and procedure in advance of when we brought it to Senate and who approve it, as well as collaboration with Student Services and Instruction. The proposal sets a clear GPA standard aligned with requirements for program and degree completion, and helps the college to actively engage students to benefit them and the resources we have to support their achievement. The procedure is an addition. It did not exist previously, and so that is also part of our presentation.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought there, I thought you were going to speak.
Nope, I'm just here if you have some questions.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Board, any questions on the first reading of this policy? Trustee Howard.
The, the procedure itself is brand-new. Is that correct?
That's correct.
But the policy was there before?
That's right.
And what kind of procedure did you use for the policy before this procedure?
There really was no procedure. There, with the policy, it just basically stated, this is your academic standings based off of your, your GPA. But outside of the fact that students were notified of that standings, and for those students who were suspended or disqualified, letting them know that they weren't eligible for enrollment, there really was nothing done with, with the students in ways of a procedure.
I mean, it kinda looks like the policy has been sort of blended into a procedure now, and the policy's been shortened.
It's been shortened. That was a recommendation that, that we received from Senate to make the policy more of a policy, and then moving things that had previously been in the policy, such as what happens if you are suspended, or what happens if you are disqualified, more into a procedure for the institution to follow. So fine-tuning that policy to make that very clear, and then bringing in the procedure to explain what would then happen to support the policy.
Um.
Certainly.
The reason I was asking that, before, it was a policy, and there was a, there was the, looked like the three-step process of being on probation and that sort of thing. And now we're taking and moving that into a procedure. This Board has no control over procedures. That's something that's done by the faculty and staff and that sort of thing. We do have control over policy. And by shortening it in the way that we have, we're losing some control over how it may change in the future. And I guess I'm wondering, what was the thought behind that? Why take it out of the, out of the policy and putting it into procedure where the Board then really quite frankly loses control over how it's administered?
Well, sorry, can you have some? One thing that, when you look at what the previous policy was versus what the current one is, it's, it's basically saying the same thing. We have added a few things, such as making advising and, and working with these students more of a requirement for the students. In the past, that's been voluntary for students in the standings. But the new policy really consolidates what the old policy used to have. It's a little bit cleaner. But other than changing the GPA, so moving that again more up into alignment with other institutions and aligning it with financial aid, the gist of that policy is really still the same. What we've just done now is taken more of the kind of day-to-day action, kind of how the students were notified, those sorts of things, and that is moved into the, into the procedure.
I guess I'm still unclear. Quite frankly, whether you use the policy or the, there was no earlier procedure. So whether this procedure or the old policy, I like the content. I mean, obviously, it's there in order to try and encourage people to succeed, and, and we need to do that. I guess I was just, when I look at the structure here in the college, and I see that we, the Board sets policy, and then the procedure is set someplace else, and we may see it from time to time, but only if we ask for it. We really don't have any control over the procedure, other than it must conform to the policy. And now we're taking out of the policy fundamental aspects of how it's to be administered. And so I'm, I'm a little hesitant to take that out without a good reason. And I guess that's what I'm looking for, is a good reason to take it out of the policy.
Our intent was simply to align what Senate guidance was around that, and if, if it would better meet the needs of the Board to return some of the definitional information around probation, suspension, and disqualification, which I think is the heart of what was moved. And the intent with the procedure was to be sure that we included requirements that students must see advisors, and that we had a higher level of commitment by the institution to support students in some very intentional way. We felt that the procedure was the place to do that. If, if we need to readjust that and keep the, both the spirit and the content of it, then certainly we're, we're happy to do that to achieve the main goal.
Well, I mean, I'm the only one who's commented on it so far. So the rest of the Board may not feel that way.
Well, that's what first reading's for, so I think that's good.
But my, my preference, quite frankly, would be to maintain in the policy the fundamental elements of the different disciplinary levels. And you can repeat it in the policy and define it further and refine it further. That's a good idea. But I, I would quite frankly like to see the Board still maintain some control over the, the essentials of the, of the, of the policy in terms of how people are sent through the different stages.
Any comments from the rest of the Board? Do you agree with that assessment? Do you want time to mull it over? Yeah, Trustee Meyer.
Just that. The very thing I'm trying to sort out is policy versus administration. And now we have a test of it here a little bit for, for, for Ken, what you're describing is, it sounds like you're trying to name some of the things that happened, but then the procedure makes it happen. Am I hearing you on, on what we're doing here? What are we putting back in?
Well, I think what they've done is take, taken policy and put it into a procedure. Nothing wrong with that, except they've taken it out of the policy in the process. And I, if they wanna put it in a procedure which didn't exist before, I think that's an appropriate thing and a good thing. But I don't wanna, my feeling is, I wouldn't, I don't wanna see it taken out of the policy, at least the fundamentals of it. And the fundamentals that I'm talking about are
The AB and C, here we go. Here's the procedure.
Get the right procedure here.
Yep.
The fundamentals are the three stages of academic probation, suspension, and disqualification, maintaining those in the policy. And then if you wanted to refine them more in the procedure, that's fine. And having a procedure for that makes good sense. I would like to see those classifications maintained in the policy.
Trustee Meyer.
I'm not sure. If Ken wants to look at that, that's okay with me. The other question I had was one, and you highlighted it to me, and that is, is this policy and academic procedure pretty coordinated with our sister institutions, or as we have folks who are dual-enrolled, either, not so much at the high school, but in, in our sister institutions, are we consistent? We mentioned the two, I think the two-point grade, two-grade point was one of the things. And I don't know that they have to be. It would just seem it would be easier for students, more effective, if they knew that the rules were about the same all the way along. Did you happen to look at that when you were thinking about this?
I'll offer a quick comment, and then it looks like Keri has a comment as, as well. The two-point O does align a number of things that are very important to communicate to students. That is the basic grade they must have in order to complete a program here. And so we should hold them to that standard, is, is part of the principle. It also aligns with what financial aid policies at a federal level also require, is that students must be earning at least a two-point O to maintain their eligibility for funding. And I think as an institution, we were sending them a mixed message, pardon me, by a policy which allowed a one-point-seven-five for part of their career, but then moved it to a two-point O. So we've removed some of that, I think, misguidance that we were providing students. The one other thing that I, I will add, and again, Keri may, may have, have a comment, is we, we are very hopeful that we can implement this now, if, if that is for the coming academic year. And that's part of the reason why it is timely that we would get any feedback from you. We, of course, cannot reconvene Senate at this point and, and then revisit it, which, which would mean we would continue to have a policy which allows a student with a one-point-seven-five to continue to, to be enrolled here in what we, we, at that point, define as good standing.
In regards to how this would line up with the other institutions, the two-point O for good standings is, is pretty standard across the board, not only in the region but nationwide. One area that, as an advisor, I've seen it cause problems with our students is they will be here for two, sometimes three semesters, be at that one-point-seven-five. And for that student, their goal maybe was to transfer before completing a degree here, which in order to complete a degree, you do need the two-point O. When they went to transfer to another institution, they were not accepted, or they were put on a probationary standings at that institution. So it, it really benefits our students to move that up to a two-point O, not only to keep them in good standings with things like financial aid, but also keep them in alignment with graduation, and keep them eligible to transfer, if that is their goal.
So the end result is a good thing you did it. How come it took us so long?
Board, I see, I tend to agree. This Board, I will, my experience with this Board is we're very sensitive to any kind of policy removal that involves removing the Board. And so I think the duplication is fine. I tend to agree with Trustee Howard. If you could go back and rework this for the second reading, I think what I'm hearing is we understand the need for the policy. If you could go back and rework and put some of the, the nuts and bolts back into our policy and show us what it looks like at second reading. Is that what I'm hearing from various Board members? Trustee Nielsen?
I'm sorry, the follow-up thought was, is there a timing factor now for next fall students? What I think I heard you say was, the months of policy goes into effect, which could be after the second reading next time, then everybody next, starting next fall, has that criteria.
Correct.
How retroactive is it to folks that are with us now?
We have the policy that's currently in place.
Trustee Nielsen.
Is this modification here to protect the student that's receiving funding? If a student has a one-point-seven-five, and he is not, he's paying his own way through, doesn't take any financial aid, does that change your position?
It, it would, it would change my, my position still. I, I believe if, if our message is to students, that you need to meet a standard in order to be able to complete a program or a degree here, then we ought to hold students to that standard from the beginning. And the institution should help ensure that that student has access to all the resources, advising and, and other supports that exist here, so that they can meet that mark. And, and Keri's example, I think, is a very good one. Even if a student was paying his or her own way for their tuition here, and they wish to transfer, say, a year into their enrollment here, they will be almost certainly, and certainly the institutions that I have worked at previously, on probation the moment they walk in the door. So they're at a disadvantage.
All right. Trustee Meyer?
We're getting close. The same thing would be if they finished here, and then three years later, came back to enter another institution. Is that two-point factor gonna be a factor in their transferability at any time in their lifetime of hopefully going back and forth in the educational system?
All right. So hopefully, we've given you some clear direction. Come back to us at second reading and put some of it back. Thank you. That takes us on board to our information item, Career Technical Education Facility Update. Chris Martin.
Madam Chair, trustees, in, in the midst of budget, this project is moving forward and is continuing to be addressed. And so I just wanna give an update briefly, that we are nearing the one-hundred percent completion date for drawings. We're getting really, really close. Our goal is to have that done by June eighth, with the plan in place that bid documents would be available for review by June the eleventh, with a bid opening following the July fourth holiday, with a planned actual beginning of construction, barring any unforeseen events being mid-July. That will allow us to stay on track to open the facility in time for the upcoming fall. And so I'm happy to report that that is continuing on progress and is on plan.
Great. Board, any questions, comments from Trustee Nielsen?
Any update, Chris, on funding and where we are with the different funding opportunities?
Absolutely. I am very pleased to announce that the EDA grant had its initial review in Seattle by the EDA Grant Department, and that was a well-received. We got some good feedback. This is an incredible grant opportunity. We're applying for two-point-five million dollars. They do an initial review, tell you some things that they think we should look further into, and give us a chance to submit it fully, which we plan to do in the next two weeks. So that's a two-point-five million dollar opportunity. The foundation has agreed to partner with the college in the pursuit of that five million gap through grants, through equipment and technology funds, as well as through private gifts. And that is just beginning at this time.
Trustee Meyer.
Sounds to me like the days aren't long enough to get all these numbers together for both our budget and this grant. Thank you for the extra, I'm sure it's taken a lot of extra work from your team to get all this in place, but that's exciting. Thank you, President Dunlap, for getting us in line for the grant.
Trustee Banducci.
Chris, who are we, who are we competing against for that grant? Do you have any idea how many people have applied?
We do not. We fall in the western region, and so Nevada, Oregon, Washington, Alaska, Idaho, and a portion of California are in our grant region. The initial feedback was very strong from the EDA Grant Office that we had a good submittal.
Is it just one grant for one recipient, or are there multiple grants, or is there a pot of money that's being split up?
Dr. Dunlap?
Thank you. There is a pot of money that is allocated to the Regional Economic Development Office, and the funding cycle happens every ninety days. And so from the time we submit, we will know within ninety days whether we get that grant or not. And there could be anywhere from zero to twenty people applying for funding. Now, we're not competing against them per se. And if, and if an organization doesn't receive a grant, they can apply then in a subsequent cycle. So there are four cycles per year. And it's really based on what the local and regional economic development offices submit. And I think one of the advantages we have is that we are, first of all, putting in place career and technical programs that produce workers. And that's one of the metrics that economic development measures grants against, over a nine-year period, how many workers we will produce. And so as an educational institution, we're gonna produce quite a few. The other piece of that, I think, is that we have not gone to that well before. And so, as Chris mentioned, there was only one major comment that came back, and that was an estimate of how many jobs we will produce for the region. And so I'm meeting with Sarah Flayland tomorrow, for example, to sit down and, and look at how do we make that estimate? How do we provide a nine-year look at that? And so I feel very optimistic about where we are with that grant.
Thank you. Any further questions for Chris? Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Trustees, that takes us, I believe, to the Board Chair. I would like to, on a, on a personal level, I would like to express my appreciation to North Idaho College, on behalf of all the police officers that work for the city of Port Laine. We, we dealt with a terrible, terrible with a terrible, terrible tragedy a few weeks ago, and it's been very difficult. This college stepped up, and they said, how can we help? And so what you did for us, we wanted to give Sergeant Greg Moore the appropriate funeral, one that we felt he deserved. And so we worked very hard to do that. And this college, they said, what can we do? And you all came together, and you opened up this facility for the overflow, for people to come and share their respects for Sergeant Moore. And I just can't express enough to you how much we appreciate that, on behalf of my Chief of Police, the Police Association, and certainly the Moore family. We are indebted to you for being the community partners that you are. So thank you for that. I'd also just like to say, before we go into the good of the order, it's been a great year for the college. We graduated over 1,000 students. I mentioned that earlier, but that's significant. And I wish all of you that are not carrying a class load this year, or you're not part of the mandatory staff for the summer, I wish all of you a wonderful summer. Those of you that are returning, I know you have a lot of work to do. And so we will be here with you, and thank you once again for all of your hard work. Board, any remarks for the good of the order?
Madam Chair, I would like to get on our agenda, if it's next time, or the next two times we've been talking about this RIT policy, I would like to see this brought up to the front so that we can get that done. And the second thing is, I would like to propose a time on our calendar to make a first pass at the, the STEP policy, address the, and get some clarification. Is this a legal binding contract, or is this a suggestion so that when we have any other first of the discussions, that we know where we stand from a legal position?
Okay. Those are two agenda items. Board, any other further discussion? Trustee Meyer?
In case the agenda's not long enough, we've been talking about long-range planning and some refinement of some ideas we've had, but I think we need to look at determining and establishing officially a long-range plan. And I think really that probably comes back to staff bringing back to us some of the things that are probably on your shelf somewhere, so we can continue as we look forward to our new buildings on campus, being sure we've had a, a big picture look. I want to be sure we begin to talk about ACCT in October, because when, after we meet in June, we don't usually meet in July. And oftentimes, registration costs and airfares would be a factor.
Good point. Thank you. Board, we need to get on that. If you're planning on attending the conference, we need to contact Shannon immediately and ask for, either for her help in making arrangements, or let her know we're doing it ourselves.
And I think that's based on the, the, this conference, which is the Trustees Conference, Community College Trustees Conference, is in San Diego. So we were thinking, we skipped it, I believe, last year. Most everybody did.
Right.
And that's part of that accountability we've been talking about. And this year, since it's both, hopefully, a little bit closer, and the topics are timely because it's talking about reinventing ourselves, I believe, was part of the topic, I would like to suggest to all of our Board, take a look at that, because that is a time for us to get tuned up. That's October 14th to 17th, I think, because we were already working on calendars there. So then we, on this calendar, there's upcoming events we have before us. And we now have the June 17th event. Then our August Board meeting, we just adopted a new calendar, so we have those dates before us. And September, October. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments for the good of the order? Thank you, Board. Meeting adjourned.